Good evening. It is Wednesday, December 6, 2023, and the time is approximately 6:30 PM. My name is Brady Goldsmith, designee at this hearing for the Montgomery County Department of Transportation. Here with me this evening to conduct this public hearing is Mr. Seifu Kersey, engineer with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, Division of Traffic Engineering and Operations. Also in attendance is Ms. Lori Main, planning specialist, all with the side block program. Mr. Kersey will be providing the information and details regarding the access restriction under considerations. Thank you for joining us in this virtual platform. Although we have held quite a few of these virtual hearings, we are still learning, so please bear with us if we encounter any technical difficulties tonight. Please note that tonight's hearing is being recorded. The link to the recording will be posted on www.montgomerycountymd.gov/Leland website by 5:00 PM tomorrow. You may also notice that your video cameras are turned off by default this evening. To reduce the bandwidth of the meeting and maximize technical efficiency, we request that you please do not turn on your video cameras. Likewise, your microphones have been muted. Once the testimony part of this hearing begins, those who have signed up to testify will be called on and asked to unmute when it is your turn to speak. Once invited to unmute, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon at the bottom left of your screen. If you have not signed up in advance to testify but wish to do so, please raise your hand by clicking the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and then clicking Raise Hand. If you are joining us via telephone only, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad and star six to unmute yourself once invited to unmute. Please wait until the testimony portion of this hearing to raise your hand. You may raise your hand at any time during the testimony portion. We will call on you to provide your oral testimony and unmute your microphone when it is your turn to speak. Written testimony and comments may be submitted as well and will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. If time allows, following the testimony portion of this hearing, we will hold a question and answer session. You may raise your hand to ask a question, or you are welcome to type your question in the chat box, the icon at the bottom of your screen. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant to Executive Regulation 17-94 AM through traffic volume access restrictions in residential areas. The purpose of a public hearing is to obtain testimony if the benefit of the plan to residents of the street covered under the plan outweigh potential impact on the surrounding community or arterial roadway network. This form allows you to provide testimony either in support for or in opposition to the plan. Public comments should be focused entirely on the restrictions, on the access restriction under consideration, which is the topic of the discussion. All interested persons are entitled to be heard at this hearing. However, the testimony portion of this hearing is not a form for dialogue, question and answers or cross-examination. Please direct your remarks to the specific access restriction under consideration that is the subject of this hearing. If comments stray into areas unrelated to this project, I will ask that you refocus your comments to this subject project. Following the conclusion of this public hearing, the record will remain open for 30 days to allow any person who was unable to attend this hearing an opportunity to have their written testimony and comments included into the public record and be fully considered. The official closing date by which all comments and testimony must be received is Saturday, January 5, 2024 at 5:00 PM. Submissions may be emailed or sent regular mail and must all be received and postmarked by the close of this hearing record. Written submissions will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. Submissions should be sent to trafficops, T R A F F I C O P S, at montgomerycountymd.gov. After the hearing is concluded and the record is officially closed, I, as hearing officer, will review and weigh all the information submitted into the public record and make a recommendation to the Director of the Department of Transportation, Chris Conklin, for his final decision as to whether the plan has been shown to be in the best public interest and whether to authorize the project as proposed or any portions thereof. And now, to discuss the access restrictions under consideration, I give you Seifu Kersey.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsmith, Ms. Main, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, we're discussing this access restriction under consideration because we got the requests from the Hamlet Citizens Association. They have excessive traffic on their road, and we reviewed the request based on the Regulation 1794 AM. And this is why we are discussing this issue today. When a resident asks us for access restriction, we always have the responsibility to look at the request and see if that request meets the regulations set in Executive Regulation 1794 dot AM. You can see the AM map what we're proposing, that is a green dot where the regulation will be put, that's, you know, it's, the red line is the Brookfield Road on the right. And on the east side, there is Rollingwood Terrorist Association. On the east side, the Hamlet Citizens Association. On the south is Chevi's Village, Section 5. So, Leland Street is under Hamlet Citizens Association, and the association requested us that access restriction. And based on the requests, the county made a determination based on the criteria set in the regulation. The next process is, you know, if this regulation is accepted or approved, the Montgomery County Department of Transportation will ask the applicant to submit a petition before the implementation. And this will be a simple majority, that's 51% have to approve the plan before its implementation. So the next process in the thing is eligibility criteria. There are five things we have to look to determine if the roadway is eligible for access restriction. Determine the roadway classification, conduct traffic volume counts, conduct license plate surveys, look impact on the roadway network, and determine the access restriction plan to be determined. These are the five regulations criteria set in the access restriction Executive Regulation 1794 AM. So, the first thing we looked at was what is the roadway classification? Leland Street near Brookfield Road is classified as secondary residential roadway. Access restrictions are only considered on tertiary, secondary, primary, and residential roadways. We don't consider access restriction on arterial roadways. Since Brookfield Road is a secondary residential roadway, it's a candidate for access restriction. The second thing we did was we did a traffic count. The traffic count will tell us the volume of traffic going on Leland Streets. Leland Street is 26 foot wide roadway. It's on-street is park, parking is allowed on both sides of the roadway. It has basically one unobstructed traveling serving both direction. Based on the regulation, the traffic volume should be over 100 vehicles per hour to meet the access restriction. When we did the traffic count, we did AM and PM. In the AM, we got 176 vehicles traveling on Leland Street. In the PM, there was 94. So the PM was out of consideration. And on the AM, we looked at the directional traffic. Eastbound, there were 34 vehicles. Westbound, there was 142 vehicles. So the eastbound is also is out of consideration. Now we're looking at only the westbound Leland Street, which meets the criteria for access restriction. The second thing, the third thing that we did was estimating estimation of the local and non-local traffic. To do that, what we did was we did a license plate survey. We basically put somebody on the road, record the license plates serve going on Leland Streets. And that those license plates will be matched with motor vehicle administration and find out where they do reside. Based on that, we got in one hour between 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM, we got 86, we recorded 86 license plates. And of these, 86 license plates certified or 45% had originated within one mile radius of Leland Street. The remaining 51% were out of the one mile radius. So, these 51, or 59% of vehicles are considered non-local or cutsu traffic. So, this meets the cutsu, the requirement for, to be considered for access restriction. The next thing was, we looked at the level of service. We did a traffic count at different intersection. East-West Highway at Brookfield Road, East-West Highway at Connecticut, Leland at Brookfield, Leland at Connecticut, and calculated the level of service at this intersection with existing traffic. We got the level of service indicated as A, E, and up to D. And we put on the diversity traffic, when the next thing we do was, put the diversity traffic. If we restrict access to Leland Street, those traffic will be diverted on these roadways. So we calculated the diverse traffic, level of service based on the diverse traffic. And basically, on this roadway network, that it doesn't have any significant, only impact on the level of service of this roadway network. These are the level of service means, you know, that East-West Highway at Connecticut serves at E level of service. That means moderate to excessive delay. But the diverse traffic on this road, it didn't change the level of service from E to something else. It just remained E. So, based on that, what we did was we have to come out with a plan how to really has a minimal impact on the community. And we determine what kind of restriction will be required. We have a minimum impact on the neighboring streets. So the next, go to the next slide. Yeah, this is what we're considering now. No right turn on Leland Street at Brookfield Road, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM on Leland Street except buses, since there are, you know, school buses and transit buses going there. We don't want to restrict that. This is what we come up as a plan. If you're going on north of Brookfield Road, you can make a left, there is no restriction. If you're living on the east side of Brookfield Road on Leland Street, you can go through, there is no restriction. The only thing this restriction does is restrict southbound Brookfield Road going into Leland Street. So this is the plan which is under consideration, and we believe that it will have a minimal effect on the community. So, this, based on this study, we prepared a community discussion paper. We submitted to the community discussion paper to the applicant, which is Hamlet Citizen Association, and we shared it with neighboring association also. And we also posted this discussion paper on the county website. And the association, the Hamlet Association, reviews the discussion paper and approves the plan. So we moved on to the next state stage with the community assessment period. The community assessment period is a public disclosure. We have to let the community know what we're doing. So, we posted a sign on South One Brookfield Road at Leland Street with information on the access restriction plan. This is posted, the sign was posted on Brookfield Road, south of, north of Leland Street. And this is a sign which was posted, and it was there for a long time. Based on this information, we got 57 responses through emails and through our website. And this is a summary of the response we got. We have seven supporting, 84, 848 are against it. Two are, they don't have objection, they said they support the access restriction, but they also need some additional action to be taken. That's why we put it as no objection. So this is what we have, you know, we got from the public comments from residents. The main topics raised in this public comments were traffic safety improvements at other locations such as East-West Highway and Connecticut Avenue, all waste stop control at Brookfield Road and Leland Street, concerned with divert traffic along streets south of Leland Streets such as Woodbine Road. I think that the first two, we cannot cover it because they are maintained by Maryland State Highway Administration. We have submitted your concerns to the Maryland State Highway Administration District 3. The third, the last concern was, you know, divert traffic on south of, on street south of Leland Street. We understand that there is a possibility some, you know, vehicles will be diverted onto streets south of Leland Streets, but these roadways are not maintained by the Montgomery County Department of Transportation. And if this restriction wants, you know, put their own restriction, they can put their own restriction. You know, the most objections were received from Chevi's Village, Section 5, Rollingwood Citizen Association, and there are also few comments we received from residents along Leland Street. They said, you know, we can go out and drop our children, and we can no come back to our houses. So, they object, there are a few, but their objection even residents along Leland Street. Okay, the next in the process in this, you know, access restriction is the public hearing, which we're going to do that tonight. In preparation for this public hearing, we sent notification to citizens, all the people who send us comments to the Hamlet Citizens Associations. We put a sign about the hearing. We put legal advertisement on the Washington Times. We put a press release circulated twice on the Montgomery County website. We put it in, put it in Montgomery County website, and we did everything so that people can participate in this hearing. Okay, this, you know, all this information will be, is posted in the county, Montgomery County website. And all the hearing will also will be posted after the hearing, you know, process. The testimony will be posted in the Montgomery County website, and you can get that the hearing will be available to the public. And all, you know, even the, this presentation will, will also be posted on the Montgomery County website. Okay, after, you know, today, this hearing will be open after four, 30 days. It will be closed by January 5 at 6:00 PM. And when the, once the hearing record is closed, the county will make issue on the decision, and all the decision will be communicated to the residents, residents who contacted us, to the different associations and different people who have communicated with us. Okay, if the plan is accepted and implemented within 90 days of this installation of the plan, if any unexpected thing happened, if a problem happens, or at any time, if there is a safety issue, documented safety issue, the county will have, may have, will suspend the plan and reopens access restriction under consideration. And all residents will be notified if this thing is, you know, suspended. The, the last thing is reassessment of this plan. This plan can be reassessed or revisited after three years. After three years, you know, the neighborhood can apply again, you know. If you want to alter any of this plan, or if the community doesn't want this plan, then after three years, the whole process will restart again. It will be a new process that will be done. So the next process will be a public testimony, and I'll pass it to Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. Kersey. We will now hear testimony from those in attendance who wish to testify. If you have not testified, if you've not signed up to testify but decide that you would like to, please click on the reactions icon on the bottom. Meeting by phone, you may dial star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand. Once you are invited to speak and unmute yourself, please unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon at the bottom left of your screen, or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. Please clearly provide your name and address for the record prior to beginning your testimony. In addition, you may submit your full testimony in writing. These submissions will be fully considered along with the oral testimony heard here today. Please reserve all questions for the question and answer session following the testimony portion of this hearing. We will begin with those who have signed up in advance to testify this evening's hearing. These submissions will be fully considered along with the oral testimony heard here today. Again, please be sure to announce your name and property address before providing your testimony.
All right. First, we will hear from Josh Galper. Josh, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I am now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goldsmith. Thank you, Mr. Kersey, and thank you, Ms. Main. My name is Josh Galper, and I'm a resident of Section 5, and also vice chair of the Section 5 Council, and wanted to voice my opposition to the restriction. And I think that basically what I would like to sum up in my remarks is that the facts that you presented to us is only a part of the record. I believe that what needs to be considered are the facts also of the surrounding streets and communities. As you've already shown us about objections lodged by surrounding communities, both Rollingwood and Section 5, I think those issues need to be taken into account. Literally, you know, what will roll downhill, especially when you're in Woodbine and there's, there's a hill, and there will be lots more traffic to be diverted. We already have lots of traffic on our road in those hours, and it will only increase, I would think, you know, by great magnitudes if this were to go through. So to sum up, I believe that not enough due diligence has been conducted into impact on residents on neighboring streets. I think that I haven't heard in the record that you presented comparative differences among Leland, especially at this area, you know, part of the Hamlet toward Brookville, and in comparison to neighboring streets. And it's not clear to me that input of the residents will be impacted. Starting with Woodbine and Glendale residents, most immediately has been taken into account, although I very much appreciate this forum, as well as the opportunity that we had to provide, provide comments before. But I do want to just touch on a few things here under those categories. One, looking at the width of Leland, which of course you have already provided us in your record, and compare that to the width of Woodbine, which is narrower. Second, looking at housing density on various streets going up and down the, the streets beyond Leland, and seeing that there's, there's, there are actually fewer houses there. And I think, is likely others will speak to this. In addition, the, the, this leads to the inability of streets where traffic will spill over to, to not be able to handle the traffic that will happen and probably result in a domino effect of, of other restrictions. So that's, that was the gist of my remarks, and I thank you for the opportunity to share them.
Thank you, Josh. Next up, we have Will Shock. Will, can you unmute yourself?
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Will Shock. I live at 3701 Leland Street. So I am right on the corner with Leland and Brookville. And I am one of those residents who makes that right turn in the morning between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00. So I am speaking in opposition of this restriction, one, because I use it, but two, I But two, I second what the previous person said. I, I don't think that there's been enough consideration of the impact on traffic on streets south of Leland, which do not have the capacity to handle a hundred cars cutting through in the morning. And I was a little bit concerned here that simply because Montgomery County does not have traffic oversight on those streets, that any sort of overflow to those streets was dismissed as not impactful on this particular restriction. They are still county residents and so that, that is disappointing to hear. I just would hope that everyone's opinions are taken into account. And I think the fact that eighty-four percent of respondents did not want this restriction in the mornings, I think should weigh heavily as you decide whether or not to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Okay, next up, David Thomas. David, can you unmute yourself?
Yep, this is David Thomas here. I'm a resident of Woodbine Street, three seven zero five. I rise in very strong opposition to this restriction. And I will briefly touch on the reasons why, some of which Josh Galper already mentioned, but I can be, bring some more specifics here. Number one, as, as Josh correctly pointed out, Woodbine is a much more narrow street than Leland Street. This is not totally, this is an approximation. Leland's about thirty feet wide. Woodbine is about twenty feet, twenty-one feet wide. And then Williams Lane, which is the next street south on Brooksville Road, is about eighteen feet wide. It is significantly more narrow on Woodbine and Williams than Leland. Number one. Number two is there are more homes on Woodbine Street, about thirty-six compared to about twenty-eight homes on Leland Street. In addition to that, there are more shared driveways on Woodbine Street than Leland Street. Why does that matter? Because these very narrow driveways mean that there are more people, residents of Woodbine Street, who park on Woodbine Street. And that means in effect, what we have now is a more narrow street with more residents living on it and more cars parked on the street. Now, I am very sympathetic to the folks on Leland who have traffic in the morning because we have similar volume of traffic, although it was not reflected in the report that was presented to us earlier here. It can take a significant amount of time during rush hour to try to turn onto Connecticut Avenue from Woodbine Street. If this, this restriction is, is taken into effect here and there is a no turn sign, I will tell you what will happen. People who turn off of East West Highway to Brookville Road, they will see that no turn sign, but you can see Woodbine Street from Leland Street. And those cars will continue south a couple hundred feet and take a right onto Woodbine Street. So what the county is recommending again is going to funnel more cars onto much more narrow streets with more residents and more cars parked on them. That is a recipe not just for more traffic, but I am concerned about the safety issues because there are a lot of very little children who live on Woodbine Street and Glendale Place. So I think that this solution is misguided. Again, I'm sympathetic to Leland here, but all we're doing is pushing more traffic south on, on Brookville Road and it's not getting the underlying problem, which is people cutting through the neighborhoods. It's a problem on Leland. It is a problem on Woodbine. It's a problem on Underwood and Thornapple. And I, I hope the county will take that into consideration and withdraw this plan. I'll yield back my time.
Thank you, David. Next up, we'll hear from Glenn Easton. Glenn, can you unmute yourself? Okay, how about Linda Kaplan?
Yeah, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Linda Kaplan and I happen to live on Brookville Road seventy-seven thirteen. And we have unfortunately experienced much more traffic than any of these other streets. So I agree with everything the previous speakers have said, including the narrowness of all the other streets. Leland is the widest of all of them until you get down probably to, probably down to Bradley Boulevard. But we have another, we are live maybe a half a block, a few houses down from Leland Street. And to be very honest with you, if you deny access or right turn between seven and nine, at seven and nine A M., we really will have almost no way of accessing Connecticut Avenue unless we go onto one of these other smaller roads, which I do not want to do because it just will increase traffic there and does not solve this problem. The real issue is the traffic coming up from Brookville, Brookville Road, but I know that that's a state issue and we've been battling that for a long time. We cannot, if we want to get to Connecticut Avenue, there is no safe way to get from east west, from Brookville Road to East West Highway in the morning due to the traffic. It takes forever to make a left turn. In fact, I, I don't know how anybody can do it because there's so much traffic making a turn from East West Highway onto Brookville Road. So for us and we are elderly, it makes it really difficult to be able to get out of the neighborhood and will only increase traffic on all of these other roads. So I really find this plan misguided, I would agree, and I hope that the county seriously considers it. I do understand people on Leland are concerned, but I walk a lot. I see the traffic and it is not nearly that, I know it's bad, but it's not that bad and none of the other roads here can manage that. And we would be boxed in during those two hours, to be honest, to get out of here without going about a mile or a half a mile at least out of our way. So I, that's all I wanted to say and I really do hope you reconsider this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next up, we'll hear from Stephen Kaplan.
Well, I can't disagree with my wife, of course, but let me offer a particular concern that I have. As she mentioned, we live between East West Highway and Leland Street and on Brookville Road. And the traffic that cuts through, my guess is, is cutting through in order to go south on Connecticut Avenue, much of, much if not most of it. But what our problem is, is not only to go south sometimes, but to go north. I have a lot of doctor's appointments up in Shady Grove and Rockville and I have to go north on Connecticut Avenue. Well, if I can't make a right turn onto Leland to get to Connecticut, the only way I can do that is to go up, as Linda said, to East West Highway to make the left turn. Now, that's not, that's really difficult, as she pointed out. And what's going to happen, I think, is there's going to be accidents up there because people will have to be making, you'll see more people trying to make left turns and taking chances, which they'll have to take because they have no other option. And if you get an accident, we get an accident at Brookville and East West Highway, that's going to cause a real mess for a long period of time. I think the problem fundamentally is that the whole area has too much traffic. It's coming down Brookville South. It's going, diverting onto Leland. It's trying, it's going down East West Highway to make the left onto Connecticut and the right on Connecticut or go into Bethesda. And, and what you're proposing is just going to cause a whole bunch of other problems. And it's really not going to solve things in terms of the overall, except that some folks on Leland will, they'll be happier and, and I can understand that. But we're all suffering because of this. It's, it's just the nature of our time and trying to use a solution as proposed is just going to offload the problem, cause other problems and really not improve the whole, if you, if you understand what I'm saying. I'm sure you can. I'll stop now and say thank you for holding this hearing and appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. All right, next up is Julia White.
Yes, hello. Thank you very much for holding this hearing. I would echo what Steve and Linda Kaplan have both said. I live at seventy-seven oh five Brookville, which is the first house north of Leland on Brookville. I routinely take Leland all through the day when I want to go either north from here or west. And that is because it is treacherous to go north on Brookville and try to turn left onto East West Highway. And it's not only really from seven to nine in the morning. It's because traffic blasts over the hill on East West Highway heading east. And in order to make a left turn there, you really are putting your life in your hands. And so what most of us do, and I know Steve and Linda do this as well, is we take Leland. We go to the base of the hill. We turn right onto Glendale. And when we get to East West Highway, we have good visibility both for the eastbound and westbound in order to get to the public library, to get to the women's club, to head north. And those of us who are getting a little older find that that is really the very safest route. One possibility that might be considered would be to not allow left turns onto Connecticut Avenue from Leland during those hours as opposed to restricting access to Leland. That would allow those of us who are trying to take the safer route to still get north and it would cut out a lot of the cut-throughs because once they got up to Connecticut, they'd not be allowed to turn left. I don't know what that would do to the Woodbine traffic, but it, it, this really represents a huge difficulty for those of us who live between East West Highway and Leland. So thank you very much. That's our two cents worth.
Thank you, Julia. Next up, we have Danny Rose. Danny Rose. Okay, Mary Ann Brandt. Okay, how about Eric Heidenberger?
Hi, good evening. My name is Eric Heidenberger. I live at thirty-eight oh nine Woodbine Street and I'm going to be echoing a lot of what's been said already, but strongly feel that restricting traffic on Leland Street will push more through traffic over onto Woodbine Street. As mentioned, we already have a pretty narrow street. And there, my car has been hit before with cars trying to pass. Our neighbor's car was just hit a couple of months ago. And I think with more traffic, it's only going to increase the safety concerns for residents on the block, especially with those with small children, myself included. I think just having more volume on the street is just not going to work. I also am kind of sympathetic to the people that live on Leland. We do see that traffic in the morning and it's a little frustrating. And I would ask for the county and the Maryland Highway Transit Agency to kind of look at what the source of the problem is. And I think the stat from an earlier slide was that there is more than fifty percent of people that are further than a one-mile radius that are cutting through. And I think that is because it's the traffic pattern on East West and Connecticut Avenue is pretty gridlocked. I think it had a pretty bad grade. So I think a lot of people are just trying to cut through our streets to, to get on their way heading south on Connecticut Avenue. So if there's a way to look at that traffic pattern, I know there's a lot of people traveling south on Connecticut, trying to get to work, but trying to find a solution to kind of ease the flow of that through traffic on East West to prevent people from cutting through, I think would, would help a lot.
All right, thank you, Eric. Next, we'll hear from Matt Talmack.
Hi there. I am Matt Talmack and I think I'm one of the very few actual Leland Street residents on this, on this call. And I'm just going to say, I appreciate everybody's sympathy, but, but, but we actually live here and, and I am somewhat saddened to hear that this has become sort of a Woodbine versus Leland Street conversation. I don't think it should be. I think the issue is that we have a problem on Leland Street that needs solving. And I don't look at a solution as coming at the expense of other residents in our neighborhood, but we have a problem here that needs to be solved. I am out every morning walking my dogs. I have a kid who goes to school in the morning and it's dangerous. There are cars that are literally flying around the corner off of Brookville onto Leland. I'm sure because Waze or whatever app is, is telling them to avoid East West Highway is directing them this way. But it's, it's actually dangerous and I've had, I've had cars like squeal to a stop in the middle of the road when I'm crossing the road. There are kids waiting on the corner for a school bus. So I encourage all of us to look at the problem as opposed to looking at how the problem could somehow visit us if we don't take care of what's happening on Leland Street. There's a problem on Leland Street. The, the traffic is too heavy. The cars are moving too fast. People are frustrated because they're stuck, I guess, on East West Highway. And then there's one other caller who I applaud, even though we come out on different sides of, of the argument, who brought up the issue of people turning left off of Leland onto Connecticut, which is a giant problem. And it's a, it's actually a math problem. If you think about how close Leland sits to East West Highway and the, the stoplight there that stops traffic going four, five, six blocks deep on Connecticut, there's no chance that people turning left on Connecticut aren't going to just do what they do, which is to stall traffic on Leland. But again, the real issue is cars driving very quickly, dangerously on our street. And for those of us who live here, I, I want to say it again, I don't want to visit that on other streets, but that's not a solve to our issue. And I think we should all try to do a little bit better and help each other out and come up with a solution that solves the immediate problem. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Matt. All right, next we'll hear from Greg Schernack.
Good evening. This is Greg Schernack. I live on Thornapple Street. I'm also chair of the Section Five Council.
Full property address, please, Greg.
Sure, three six one six Thornapple Streets. I don't want to reiterate the comments that many people have made, but I will note my and many in Section Five's strong opposition to this proposal for many of the reasons that have been already outlined. Let me point out first that a good chunk of Leland Street actually falls within Section Five. It's divided between the hamlet and Section Five, which I do think is germane to this discussion. And as others have said, what will happen if this restriction is put in place? You'll see a cascade effect down Brookville Road, increased traffic on Brookville. I should point out a street with school buses on it and, and I know someone else has mentioned children, but there'll be more traffic on Brookville where a lot of children wait for the bus. As my kids did in Days Path and actually one still does. You also will have people trying to cut through to Leland through Glendale instead of through Brookville, which raises its own issues and does not minimize the problem. As others have said, Woodbine, Williams, Underwood, Thornapple are all narrower than Leland, making them even more dangerous for the increase in traffic. Let me note, however, that I have spoken with Shane Moore, the head of the Hamlet Citizens Association about this. And although we did agree on the restriction, we do agree that what the root of this problem is, is the intersection of East West Highway and Connecticut Avenue. And we both agreed that if attempts could be made to address that, and I realize that's not exactly the point of tonight's hearing, but I do think it's germane because it is the root cause of this, both by probably trying to increase the amount of time one has the left turn signal and possibly increasing the lanes that are permitted to turn left, at least at certain hours, that could minimize the delays there and therefore dissuade people from trying to do the Leland cut. That could minimize the delays there and therefore dissuade people from trying to do the Leland cut-through. Um, I agree the left turn, uh, from Leland or from any street uh, south of it onto Connecticut Avenue raises concerns. But simply, again, moving that problem from Leland to another street is not solving the problem. It's just moving the problem. And therefore I, and many others, uh, oppose this restriction. I thank you very much for the time to speak. And have a good evening.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, next we'll hear from Drew Polikoff.
Hi, thank you. My name is Drew Polikoff. I live at thirty seven hundred Woodbine Street, right on the corner of Woodbine and Brookville. Uh, I'd like to echo many other speakers' comments and, uh, voice my position against this, this access restriction. Uh, as, as mentioned by others, the, the impact of this access restriction will inevitably be a diversion of traffic to, to Woodbine and other neighboring streets. Uh, as, as has been mentioned, Woodbine is significantly narrower than, than Leland Street. Has narrower sidewalks, houses positioned much closer together, smaller driveways. Uh, the narrowness of, of Woodbine Street already presents an issue and concern for, for roadway traffic and, and safety hazards. Due to parked cars belong, belong to residents, which unlike Leland are only allowed on one side of the road. Vehicles often have to pull to the side, wait for a road to clear before moving forward. That, that causes traffic jams in of itself. Uh, diverting traffic away from, from Leland, which again wider street and allows cars to be parked on both sides will, will just result in, in further traffic jams on Woodbine. And it's, it's just concerns us from, from a, a safety and, and danger perspective as well. Uh, I can tell you that I already have a very difficult time getting out of my driveway during this, this rush hour peak. Our car has been grazed. We've seen other cars on Woodbine Street get hit by vehicles that, that, you know, speed down during rush hour. And there are many small children, pets, including for, for our family and people that walk on the street. For, for these reasons, it's, it, all the concerns that were cited in the study with using Leland as a cut-through are amplified when, when you apply them to, to Woodbine and, and, uh, Williams and the other streets kind of in between, Leland and, and Brad, and, uh, Bradley on Brookville. So would encourage the, the county to please consider, uh, these, these other neighboring streets and the impact that may, uh, may cause with, with this access restriction. Thank you for, for letting me, uh, have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Drew. Uh, and next we'll hear from Brooke Thomas.
Thank you so much. Um, my name is Brooke Thomas and my address is three, seven, zero, five Woodbine Street. I too am speaking in opposition to this, um, proposal. And I won't belabor points that other people have made. But just a few things that I wanted to add. Currently with the Capitol Crescent Trail closed, bikes are diverted onto Woodbine Street. If, by the county, and so we have a lot of bike traffic on Woodbine. And if cars are no longer allowed to go on Leland, I worry that more cars would be on Woodbine. And because of the bike traffic, there would be accidents. In looking at your impact study, I think it was slide four. I did notice that there was nothing done, um, about the, the surrounding streets, I think because of some jurisdictional issues. But if you were to look at that a little bit more, I want to reiterate the point about the parking on Woodbine and Williams is actually one street south of us and it's even smaller, but it is, um, there is a lot of on-street parking. And it is not wide. Neither street is wide enough to have two lanes of traffic pass, um, back and forth. And when cars are turning onto Woodbine, and I'm assuming it probably happens onto Williams too. There's, um, often people having to throw on their brakes because they don't realize it's hard to sort of see when you're making that turn. We know that, I'm sure and I'm sympathetic that the Leland folks have these same issues, but I think closing Leland down, just pushes the traffic on, onto Woodbine, Williams, Thornapple, Underwood, and so on and so forth, all the way down probably into the village as well. My last point is I just, I also am a little concerned, um, maybe differently than other folks about any of these turn restrictions in terms of residents being boxed in. If I can't make a left off of Woodbine Street, my street, which I know some people have talked about that on Leland. That would make me, to get into Washington DC, I'd have to go onto Brookville Road, which is already standing traffic. Um, the traffic is at a standstill between seven and nine PM. So I just, I think as these traffic restrictions are considered, you need to look at them sort of all together despite the jurisdictional issues or the multi-jurisdictions that, um, preside over these roads, but there, it's, there could be problems in what you're creating in terms of making it that residents don't have access to get off their properties in the morning and go where they need to go. But again, I am in opposition to this proposal. I'm sympathetic on traffic, but I don't think it solves the problems that people are looking to solve. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Okay, next we'll hear from Jordan Maher.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Uh, I'm a resident, uh, kind of uniquely here. I'm within Section Five, but I'm actually on Leland Court. So Leland Court is about a half-block east of Connecticut off of Leland Street. So I'm essentially on Leland Street for the most part, a half-block off of Connecticut. So my experience, uh, with the traffic issues are many mornings, it's nearly impossible to make a left out of Leland Court onto Leland Street because the backup coming down Leland Street is so long that you, you, you can't make a left out of Leland Court. So I can't even get on, on Connecticut, which is simply a, a half-block away. So that the traffic backup on Leland is, is considerable and it affects all the residents on Leland Court. Um, and I haven't heard our street discussed here yet. That being said, you know, I have, uh, I know a lot of the folks have spoken on the call. I have friends elsewhere in Section Five on the neighboring streets that are being discussed here. And, you know, I, while my concern is that if this, if this, uh, proposal fails, then it sounds like from your presentation, there would be a three-year moratorium on reconsideration of another solution. And while I, I would echo and concur with the concerns by the residents elsewhere in Section Five on Woodbine and other streets, I don't want to see no solution emerge for another three years, if that's, if I'm accurate with that understanding. So what I would like to see would be maybe a, a extension of the time period for consideration so that, uh, MC DOT could work with the jurisdiction overseeing Woodbine and other Section Five streets to come up with a more holistic plan. And then have that plan considered by the county executive. All right, if it, if it fails now with limited information because the neighboring jurisdiction wasn't consulted or analyzed, then it's, it's going to fail and then nothing's going to change for, it sounds like another three years at a minimum. So, um, I guess I'm not speaking in favor or against right now. I'm, I would recommend or request an extension of the consideration and further collaboration with the Section Five jurisdiction, uh, for the roadways under its domain. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, next we'll hear from Jackie Coolidge.
Hello, yes, uh, this is Jackie Coolidge and I live, uh, at three, two, three, three Falling Drive. So I'm in Rollingwood and, uh, I'm opposed to the proposal, uh, similar to, uh,
Jackie, you have a bad connection. We're not, we can't hear you.
At, at all?
No, I can hear you. It's just, it's faint and it's kind of.
Okay, is this better?
Much better, yes, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, I live on, uh, three, two, two, three Falling Drive. So I'm in Rollingwood, uh, and, uh, opposed to the proposal, uh, for pretty much the same reasons as other people who spoke earlier who live, uh, on Brookville. Which is that, uh, we are bonded up and, uh, for many of us trying to get to, for example, the Bethesda Metro or anything in Bethesda in the morning. I'm trying to get onto your West Highway. Uh, is having to make a left turn is just way too dangerous. Uh, yet there is a time to request this, you know, traffic light that's not bonding square. So just purely for safety, uh, we go, uh, south onto Brookville and then right on Leland and then right again, uh, to get up to Connecticut where we have the traffic light so that we can then make the left turn on. And, you know, there's quite a number of people, uh, who have this problem of being bopped up in Rollingwood, uh, you know, it's sort of bad enough already. I don't like to have to, you know, go down, uh, to Leland uh, in order to get on the East West Highway, which is the only safe way we could possibly do it. So I really hope that, uh, uh, the, uh, Department of Transportation will, as other people have said, um, on both sides, if you, if maybe need, uh, a much broader look at the traffic problems in this area and, you know, with this solution that's not just going to, you know, shuffle the problem onto other streets or, you know, uh, none of these, uh, you know, not going to solve a lot of problems. Uh, and so we need to look at it much more specifically. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Uh, next up, Greg Cope.
Hi, uh, this is Greg Cope. I live at thirty eight oh six Leland Street in Section Five between Glendale and Connecticut. And I testify because I am in strong support of this turn restriction. As some others who live on Leland sit, have said, there is a gravely dangerous situation on Leland Street. I think that those who don't live on Leland Street don't fully understand it. But there is a high volume of cars in the morning, typically driving at very fast rates of speed. They don't always stop at stop signs, especially down where there's a bus stop where kids congregate in the morning to get on the bus. And I know I've almost been hit by cars before. As of others, you know, just trying to get in the car because of the vast number of, of cars coming. So I think that this is a good proposal because it is not just trying to avoid inconvenience, but it is a very unsafe situation. And I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that nothing bad happens. But there have been instances where it's, there've been a lot of close calls. I'm sympathetic to it causing issues for other areas, but I would be supportive of a more comprehensive approach to solving those problems than just saying we don't want to remedy what we all know is a very dangerous and a bad situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, next we'll hear from Tucker Farman.
Hi, good evening. This is Tucker Farman. I, we live at three, seven, one, six Williams Lane. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns. I also am in opposition of the proposal. Uh, as has been noted, thank you, uh, David Drew Brook and perhaps others, Williams Lane is also a one-lane street. Uh, we already have a major problem with cars cutting through during rush hour. It creates a couple of very serious concerns for us. Uh, it's been noted cars flying through the neighborhood, uh, drivers drive down the street very fast during rush hour and there's ver, it's very limited visibility, given the narrow nature of the street and cars already parked on the side. And then when residents and children are using the street, whether to walk to school or get out of the house and go to work, uh, that tends to slow the, the cut-through traffic down. And there've been a number of instances where, where commuters get quite agitated and, uh, it's created some, some issues. So we're already concerned about the safety and I think this would make matters worse. I also want to note that I, I haven't heard anybody say they don't think there's a problem on Leland. Um, so I'm simp, very sympathetic to that. I just think the, the opposition is to the proposed solution. So I also agree that more consideration would be beneficial to everybody. Thank you again.
Thank you, Tucker. Okay, um, next we'll hear from Harry Benner. Harry, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, there we go. Uh, my name is Harry Benner. I live at thirty eight oh six Underwood Street. And it seems to me there's no further discussion needed here. The following points I think have been made. Number one, there's a traffic problem on Leland. Number two, the solution will shift the problem onto Woodbine, Williams, Underwood and Thornapple. And number three, if you have garbage in your yard, it is not a solution to the problem to put it in your neighbor's yard. And number four, half of the problem, uh, as identified by the speakers from Leland Street who spoke, have nothing to do with a right turn restriction or a left turn restriction. They have to do with speed or failure to stop for stop signs. Those are addressed by entirely different mechanisms. They're addressed, addressed by enforcement. That is policemen, speed cameras, speed bumps, additional speed bumps, I guess in this case. But they have nothing to do with whether traffic should be able to turn into the street. So we can continue to talk about this, but everybody on this call knows that if this restriction is passed, we will be having the same discussion about Woodbine, Williams, Underwood and Thornapple the next time it's necessary. Thanks very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Harry. Okay.
So I think that concludes the speakers who have expressed an interest in speaking tonight. Is there anyone who did not sign up to testify who wishes to speak? Um, if so, please click the reactions icon and raise hand to raise your hand or dial star nine on your telephone keypad. Once invited, you may unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon at the bottom left of your screen or dialing star six on your telephone keypad. So thirty seconds or so. Okay, we have one.
Okay, looks like, uh, Ian would like to speak. Ian? Or E?
No, this is Larry Lanfor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, this is Larry Lanfor. I live at thirty six fourteen Spring Street in Section Three. Two thoughts. There does seem to be a problem at Leland Street and I hope a solution can be found. But listening to the comments so far, the overflow traffic, if the restriction goes into place, will not just affect Woodbine and the Section Five Streets. We have Taylor Street and Raymond Street in particular in Section Three. Raymond Street already is a cut-through problem, especially uh, with the traffic light at Raymond and Connecticut. Uh, this is just sure to add additional cut-through traffic at Raymond Street. So I do think that a broader view has to be made about how we find a solution without having that solution turn our other streets into really dangerous places. And some people have mentioned how narrow some streets are. Well, in Section Three on Raymond Street, our street is only sixteen feet wide. Additional traffic would be a tragedy there. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
So anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay. Thank you all for your testimony. Seeing that everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so. This concludes the oral testimony portion of this public hearing. We will now have a question and answer session. Please click the reactions icon and then raise hand to raise your hand or press star nine on your telephone keypad if you wish to ask a question. You may also type your question into the chat box. If we run out of time before answering all questions, we will answer your questions via email in the days to come. I think we had at least one or two in the, in the chat.
I have a question in the chat. Will the local residents who live on Leland Street be able to access the road or are they restricted as well? restricted as well?
The restriction, if approved, will apply to everybody. There is no local residence only sign. It's only allows buses, school buses and ride-on buses. Everybody else will be restricted. So there is no separation between local and non-local. So the sign applies, the restriction applies to everyone.
Yeah, I think there are a few more in the chat.
Can Section V pass a similar ordinance restricting traffic? Or Section Five, sorry, that was silly of me. Can Section Five pass a similar ordinance restricting traffic?
Yes, if Section Five wants a restriction, they can do the restriction.
So with Section Five, you said as a municipality? So they wouldn't request it of MCDOT, they would request it of the, I guess, the municipality?
Yeah, it's only needs approval from residents living in Section Five. So it doesn't go through this access restriction process.
Okay, we have a question from Jordan Muller.
Yeah, thank you. Was there any outreach or coordination with Section Five during the course of the analysis? Was there an attempt to do a more coordinated plan or no? Is it, does it have to go in this sequential process where Section Five would have to?
I think Section Five has the documents that we have, the plans that we submitted was submitted to Section Five. So Section Five is aware of the plan.
The HOA.
Yeah, the management that's in Section Five.
Okay, next we have a question. I don't have a name. iPhone.
I apologize, I think that's me. My name's Cosmo Santulo. I'm at Nine Leland Court. I just was curious, my question was earlier was around whether residents of Leland Street, Leland Court would be exempted from that? And I, excuse me, one second. And I'm just wondering, it sounds like you did a one-hour study on one day and found that there was a sixty forty non-resident residence, but maybe I have that backwards, of eighty-six cars. But I'm just wondering how that leads you to the idea that all traffic should be restricted and not only non-resident traffic? Because it seems to me like that's not nearly enough data to make that decision. Thank you.
Yeah, service, you know, license plate service as done usually in the peak hour where the traffic is heavy. And we don't do more than that. It's just based on survey. So, you know, we identify the peak hour traffic and we did one-hour survey and we determined based on that.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying that I would just like to state for the record that one hour, one day is not nearly enough to be representative of what traffic actually looks like.
I think that's we usually do. So we believe that's representative though for the license plate survey. As to your request for residents along Leland Street will be subject to the same restriction as anybody else. So there is no difference between non-residence residence. Once the sign is installed, it applies to everybody.
So I have another question in the chat. What do you think will happen to traffic flow if Section Three, Five, and Chevy Chase Village all pass similar restrictions?
Yeah, you know, what we believe is traffic, especially on arterial roadsways and major streets, should remain on major streets, not go into local streets. These local streets are not designed to carry heavy traffic. So we believe that they have to stay in the major street, just not cut, just don't cut through local streets because these local streets are not designed for this kind of traffic.
Brady, did you have other questions in your chat? Because I think it may have been sent directly to you.
Yeah, they must have been. I have a few. I have a couple from Larry. The first one, you state that fifty-nine percent of traffic in a morning hour were from outside the community and thus were likely cut-through traffic. Can you briefly explain how you gathered this, these data?
Okay, what we did was, we did collect the license plates going on Leland Streets. Then we match their addresses, where they live. So we find out where at least their destination is, where their origin and destination is. So we plotted them in a GIS map and, you know, found out that these fifty-nine persons are living outside one-mile radius of Leland Street. The forty-one percent, I'm correct, that will be living within one-mile radius of. Yeah, that's thirty-five of the total vehicles are living within one-mile radius while fifty-one are living outside one-mile radius of Leland Street. That's why I identify them, local and non-local traffic.
And I have one more from Larry. Analyze potential impact of this restriction on neighboring streets. Bradley Lane was considered. Why didn't you consider the impact on Raymond Street as well?
Raymond Street, let me see where Raymond Street is. We didn't consider anything under Section Five. The only thing we considered was roadways which are maintained by Montgomery County, which is Leland Street. We know it, you know, this traffic might be, other traffic might be looking at coming on Leland, on other streets, nearby streets, but the request from, came from Hamlet Association specifically for Leland Street. So that's what we looked at.
Yes, you had previously said in, during the presentation that basically the access restrictions are requested and then the county has to do their due diligence investigating it and that's, and this public hearing is also part of that process. We have a new question. Is Brookville Road an arterial road?
Yes, it's maintained, it's an arterial road. It's maintained by the Maryland State Highway Administration. All these numbered streets, one eighty-five, fourteen, one eighty-six are maintained by Maryland State Highway Administration.
I have one more in my queue from Laura Foggan. What is the basis for suggesting that residents' concerns can be disregarded because the county does not have traffic oversight on the additional roads that would be adversely?
I don't get that one.
Laura, are you online if you can elaborate?
I am, thank you. Yes, my question, it sounded as though the fact that the county did not have oversight on Section Five streets caused the impact on those streets to be disregarded in the plan's consideration of the impact on the community. That's what I understood to have been stated at the outset. And I'm wondering what the basis is for disregarding those concerns or contending that simply because certain streets are not within the county's traffic oversight, the impact on the surrounding community can be set aside from consideration?
No, we didn't disregard, you know, this founding these roads under Section Five. The problem is, there is nothing, you know, we cannot put any restriction on this street south of Leland Street because we cannot do that. They are maintained by the local jurisdictions. And these local jurisdictions have the right to put on their own restriction if they prefer to do that. So we believe, you know, some of the traffic may be diverted on this local, on streets south of Leland Street, but we cannot do anything about that. It's the local jurisdiction has the right to do, put on their own restriction. It's not disregarding, but what can we do? That's what issue is.
Yes. I guess respectfully, my question was, shouldn't that be taken into consideration in determining whether or not the restrictions on Leland should be implemented by the county?
Yeah, you know, as, also, you know, right now, there could be some traffic, you know, going on Woodbine Street and on Section Five without even restricting traffic on Leland Street. You know, we believe this traffic would be diverted. We know that it will, some of the traffic would be diverted on Woodbine Street, but what can we do? That's what our issue is. We cannot go and restrict on these streets where it's maintained by these local jurisdictions.
We have a question in the chat. I think we've touched on it, though. Where does the county assume the cars will travel if this plan is implemented?
Yeah, we're hoping that, you know, on people's traffic on going east-west highway will stay on east-west highway and make a left on Cut Avenue. And people are on Brookville Road will stay on Brookville Road and go south on Brookville Road instead of cutting through these neighborhood streets. That's our hope. It's traffic.
Okay, so basically he, he said, let me rephrase. What is the defense of Montgomery County considering such a change and how will it defend a decision if it is made? So basically, the reason why we're here tonight is to listen to you. The decision has not yet been made yet. And all of this testimony will be placed on the record. We have a court reporter here who is creating a transcript. The testimony will be placed on the record and that, and it will be considered during the final decision. If it is passed, the recommendation, the hearing officer's recommendations and the final decision that you, you know, you'll receive notifying correspondence, the recommendations will explain how the decision was reached and why the decision, you know, was made, All right, another question from Harry Benner. Why not cut off the problem at its source and forbid southbound traffic on Brookville Road in the morning? I don't think that Montgomery County has jurisdiction on Brookville Road.
Yeah, Brookville Road is maintained by Maryland State Highway Administration. I think she's talking about east-west highway and Brookville Road. Those both streets are maintained by the Maryland State Highway Administration. So Montgomery County cannot do that.
Jackie Coolidge asks, have you considered the fact that navigation software is now directing traffic onto whatever the fastest route is? And I think, you know, we are aware of that because that's how this problem started because the residents of the Hamlet Association, Civic Association, was concerned about cut-through traffic because the apps are directing people onto Leland. Constance Kiggins asks, are you able to coordinate with the Maryland Highway Administration at all on this?
Well, what, after we got the public comments, we just reviewed the public comments and we communicated regarding intersection of Connecticut Avenue and Eastway Avenue that the community wants to be reviewed. We also communicated with them about the all west stop sign at Brookville Road and Leland Streets. So whatever issue we are getting regarding these public comments, we have already sent it to the District Street, Maryland State Highway Administration.
So a lot of people are commenting that about our desire that the traffic stay on east-west highway is wishful thinking. And I think that, you know, that, I don't think that we were thinking that people would suddenly, oh, let me just stay on this road. No, because that one's too small or that one's that, you know. I think that, I think that whatever the decision that is ultimately made, it will be explained in the recommendation. And I don't think we're in a position to go into that right now. But these are all very, very valid points and we appreciate your testimony and comment.
Does anybody else have questions?
Constance asks, is there a way to ask Maryland, the Maryland State Highway Association to restrict traffic on Brookville Road?
Yeah, you know, if you go to the presentation, I think we have contact with Maryland State Administration.
Yeah, here we are.
Yeah.
Here we are.
Yeah, so any, you know, numbered street like fourteen, one eighty-six, one eighty-five, that's Brookville Road, east-west highway, Connecticut Avenue are maintained by the Maryland State Highway Administration and you can submit a request as SHA D3 Traffic Team at So any other traffic issues other than this access restriction can be submitted to Traffic Apps, T R A F F I C O P S at Montgomery County, MD.gov.
Hey, Julia White has a question.
Well, it's actually as much a comment as anything. Several years ago, there was a group that tried
group that tried to work on, um, calming the traffic on Brookville. And I, and I live on Brookville Road. Um, we were quite surprised to learn that according to the State Highway Department, Brookville Road is in fact a truck route. So, uh, anyone who's hoping to restrict much of any traffic on Brookville is going to find that it's a truck route all the way as far as, I think, um, Brookville Market. So, um, that throws another wrench into the works. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions in the, in the chat, Lori?
Yes, we have one more. Constance asks, how are you going to enforce the restriction if it is allowed? Uh, is there going to be a police officer sitting there every morning to get a ticket?
Unfortunately, that's up to the Montgomery County Police Department. We don't have enforcement power. So what we do is we install the sign, we let the Montgomery County Police Department know that we have installed these signs. And this is, you know, will be a traffic order prepared and submitted a copy to the Montgomery County Police Department. So enforcement is up to the Montgomery County Police Department.
All right, any more questions from anybody else? Uh, and, uh,
No, um, it, it, so the next question was, do you not coordinate with the police? And, and actually, I mean, we do, we send, we let them know that access restriction has been passed, the signs have been posted. So then it is their job to go and enforce it. But after that, we don't coordinate with them. Our, our position is, our job is just to, to do the project, take it through the process. And so that the county executive or director of MCDOT can arrive at their final decision. Um, we, we don't continue to coordinate enforcement after the project has been installed. David Thomas asks, if this restriction is implemented, would residents of Leland traveling south on Brookville be permitted to get back to their homes during rush hour by turning only, by, only by turning on Woodbine?
If it's approved and installed, then nobody except buses can make a right between seven and nine a.m., even residents along Leland Streets. So that restriction applies to everybody. So there is no local traffic-only sign installed with it. It's just no right turn seven to nine a.m. onto Leland Street. That will be posted on southbound Brookfield Road at Leland Street. So it applies, that sign applies to everybody.
Any more questions?
I don't have any more.
Okay. Anybody, anybody here want to, if, I'll give you thirty seconds, so raise your hand if you have any final questions.
Uh, Julia White asks, why not have a local traffic? I, like a signal, I guess? I, I don't, I don't. Oh, like a, oh, why can't we have a local traffic sign?
We, Montgomery County, if, by rule, if, you know, if we install any restriction, it applies to everybody. We don't discriminate whether we're living here or there.
I mean, it would be hard to enforce that.
Yeah, it's also hard to enforce these signs. We are just, you know, the police officer cannot just ask you, hey, where is your license? Where do you live here? So it applies to everybody. There is no local traffic only, uh, you know, sign will be on that sign. It applies to everyone. It's not enforceable. And we cannot discriminate, you know, where, where you live. It's, if a restriction is installed, it applies to everybody.
Okay, we have a question from Tucker Farman.
Oh, sorry, I think it might have just been answered. I was just asking for clarification. So even people on Leland who live on Leland cannot turn onto Leland Street? Is that correct?
Correct.
Do people on Leland Street know that?
They should know. I think we we, we had a meeting with, uh, you know, with, uh, Hamlet Association. If I remember correctly, we have indicated that today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing that all questions have been answered, we will now conclude this hearing. We will keep the record open for thirty days. Comments and written testimony are due by Saturday, January fifth, twenty-twenty-four at five P M. Additional written testimony and comments may be submitted by email, must be received or postmarked by the close of this hearing record. Submission should be sent to the Division of Traffic Engineering and Operation, one hundred Edison Park Drive, fourth floor, Edithburg, Maryland, two eight seven eight. The email address, trafficops@MontgomeryCountyMD.gov. Thank you for joining us this evening. This public hearing is now concluded.